Okay, here's the time. That's not very aggressive. I'll call the meeting of the Madera County Arts Authority in session. It's four o'clock on January 28th. Are there any additions to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair, I don't have any additions to the agenda.
Okay. Seeing none, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, salute.
At the locations in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fifteen minutes of the meeting is set aside for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes? We have the minutes from the regular board meeting of December 10th and the minutes of the workshop and the minutes from the December 20th meeting, which was a workshop. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4B, Presentation of Report Regarding the December 20th, 2018 Madera County Arts Authority Workshop. We had our meeting and discussed the JPA details. We also discussed the bylaws in detail and the recommended conflict code. We did postpone discussion of our visioning documents and we postponed them to a workshop which we are going to hold today immediately following this meeting. And I'm glad to see that all of the board members were able to be here today so that we'll kind of wrap up some important discussions relative to our getting ourselves organized. So, great. Anybody else have a comment from the board workshop? Okay, item 4C, Discussion and Consideration of Approval to Amend the Joint Powers Agreement and Direct the Implementation of Those Amendments. We spent a bit of time on this item at the board workshop. And you have it in your packet, which I think, can you find it on a screen or do you have it printed?
So staff is making some additional copies because we don't have Wi-Fi down here. They're not able to access their iPad to get the packet.
Okay, well, let's see if we could start on the JPA agreement while we're getting copies. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, because that one has only two things. Under item 3.01, the governing board. Originally, the JPA agreement called for one at-large member from the unincorporated area who resides in the unincorporated area of Madera County. The board decided at the first meeting, I believe, that we would expand the search to include members of Madera County, including all the cities in Madera County. So when we had our workshop, we discussed whether that should be codified in the JPA agreement. And if it should, then we should change the wording. So the recommendation from the workshop was to change the wording to at one at-large board member who resides in Madera County and leave out the unincorporated area part. So that's one recommendation. The second recommendation is in item 3.02 Officers. And this deals with the item that says that the office, the term of the officers shall be established by the Board of Directors annually with each officer being able to serve a maximum of two consecutive terms. When we discussed that in the workshop, we recommended that the two, the maximum of two consecutive terms be taken out. And then the board can determine annually whether it wants the same board officers to continue or not. For one example, if we have a treasurer, we may want to keep the treasurer for consistency more than two years. So that's an example of a time when we might want to do that. So those are the two. Do you have any other comments, questions, discussion related to those items or any of the rest of the JPA agreement?
I do. The original agreement creating this authority was obviously created by the general members, the public entities. And I'm wondering what authority, the arts authority, this board has to modify the JPA.
We don't have any authority to modify the JPA. If we want it modified, we would need to approve the, we would approve the recommended modifications and then the three member organizations will need to take it back to their individual boards. They're the only ones that have the authority to amend the agreement.
And that's what I thought in reading this, which brings a personal concern to me. Since it hasn't been changed as, I assume the authority is going to exist, I feel like I'm illegal. In a sense that I, when I was voted on in early December, wasn't living in the unincorporated area, which was required by the JPA at that time, I think, which then, for me anyway, calls into question, should I be voting?
Mr. Wayland, if I can answer the question for you?
Sure.
Reference to the second paragraph under section 3.01 says that without amending this agreement, the Board of Directors and at-large member composition may be altered from time to time to reflect termination and/or admission of any new general members or at-large members. So you were approved to join the board under that section that allowed an at-from-time-to-time modification without amending the agreement. The question at the workshop was, do we want to amend the agreement to make it a permanent provision that the at-large member can be a resident of Madera County? When we made the exception that one time and it seems to have worked out?
Because I missed the next meeting? That's a joke. I saw that too, but I moved on. It just seems to me that in making appointments to the board, the appointment should be made within the construct of the JPA.
And that is within the construct of the JPA?
How so?
We're talking about paragraph 3.01 of the JPA, which gives the board the power to modify those very specific provisions on a case-by-case basis from time to time without amending the agreement.
I don't read it that way. But if the authority, the board is okay with that, then I'll be okay with it too.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just in consideration for the comments that were just made by the director?
Counsel?
No.
Oh, yes. Director Wayland?
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 If it brings any sense of comfort, I also have the opportunity to, or the option to abstain from.
You also have the option to abstain from voting on that particular item.
So if this board votes to recommend changes, then the procedure will be that each of the representatives in the City Council, the Board of Supervisors, and the School Board will need to take the JPA agreement to your board for approval of the amendments. Okay?
Understood.
So, any other questions or are you ready to vote?
I make a motion for approval?
Second.
It's been a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? So how will they get the document now to take it forward to their boards?
So I can distribute it to the board secretaries and then they can give it to their, get it in their process to get it on their agendas.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay. Next item is item. Four, item 4D, which is Discussion and Consideration to Approve Resolution Adopting the Bylaws for the Madera County Arts Authority. This one has more changes in it, so we'll go through it as area by area if that works for everybody so that we can make sure we're all on the same page. Okay, so the first one I see is 4.02, which changes the wording as reflected in the JPA document from unincorporated area to who resides in the county. Nothing there? Okay. Under section five, we have, we have a couple of things that are to be determined. And that is, at the workshop, we discussed having six, at least six regular meetings a year. I think, as I recall, that would be like every other month. But since it says at least six, there could be more, but we'd have at least six. And then the date and time of each regular meeting shall be fixed by resolution of the board. Is this where we just, no, that's not, okay. Oh, the discussion question I believe then is about whether we're going to allow teleconference. Anybody have strong feelings one way or the other about teleconference?
Just so that the board is clear, teleconferencing triggers certain Brown Act issues. Wherever an individual is joining a board meeting in an official capacity, it has to be noticed at the location. And the location has to be open to other people joining at that location. So there are logistics about validating compliance as well as logistical complications that the individual board member would have to undertake in order to join by conference call. So those are the concerns, but it can be whatever way the board prefers. I would also note just for consideration that the general members at least have been granted two alternates to take your place if one of you cannot be here, precisely to make sure that your agencies are represented at all meetings. So if that carries any weight or consideration, that is also the case.
I just assume that we keep it simple and not have meetings remote, opportunities for meetings, but I'm not going to fall on my sword over it either if somebody feels strongly the other way.
Anyone else feel strongly? Either way?
That's about the strongest position we heard.
Yeah. I think we talked about it a lot at the workshop because it's very cumbersome to manage all of that and making sure everything's correct and properly noticed. So, do we need to take it out or just not add it? It just?
We would delete it from the proposed bylaws here based on amendment in the moment. And then when you pass the resolution, it would pass approving bylaws that did not include that.
Okay.
Am I understanding there's consensus to remove it?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and then 5.04 with the minutes. Now, the county clerk of the board will be posting the minutes according to this?
Okay.
So I have a quick question. At the present time, the procedure is I post the minutes after your board has approved them, so they're not posted as it reads in the bylaws immediately or as soon as possible after the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So is that a concern?
No.
As soon as possible after each meeting means after the next meeting when they've been approved.
Okay, thank you.
I think that is a correct reading.
Yeah.
You technically don't have minutes until they've been approved.
Right. Okay. Now one for our discussion is 5.07. Our bylaws say Roberts Rules of Order, but the board has wanted to consider using Rosenberg's rules instead. So we received copies of Rosenberg's rules. And I'd like to know what the board thinks about whether we should move forward with Robert or Rosenberg?
I don't care.
So I'm used to Roberts rules, but after having reviewed the Rosenbergs, I think I mentioned this at the workshop. I believe, I know the city uses Rosenbergs. I don't know about the county. The county go by Rosenbergs as well?
I believe. Rhonda, can you answer that? We go by Rosenberg's rules or Roberts rules?
We go by Rosenberg.
Rosenberg.
I'm totally fine with Rosenbergs. I think the simplicity of it is much more fitting.
Would you like to comment either Mrs. Foley or about the?
I like Rosenberg.
Easier?
Yes.
Easier to follow? Okay. So if there's no other question, we have a consensus that we would move to Rosenberg's rules? Okay. Now down to, oh, we have the same issues with the county clerk and the reports from the secretary, much like we did the minutes. Okay, so if we move over to duties of the treasurer now. 6.05 E and F. And we've deleted on the verify and report in writing to the board at least each, once each quarter. And we delete it on the first day of January, April, July, and October. So it would just be once each quarter depending on when our meetings fall. So that's the clarification. F, the treasurer shall assume the responsibilities, powers, duties of the controller in the absence or unavailability of the controller. Because I believe that discussion was about the fact that we don't have much money right now. And it would appear that the treasurer could act as the controller for our beginning stages. Is that what everybody else remembers?
Yes.
Okay. Under item 606, the board shall appoint annually an auditor. And. So this just cleans up the language. I don't remember there was anything special about this. Does anybody else? Okay. 6.07, there shall be a controller of the authority. Initially, the controller and authority shall be the treasurer. Okay. Okay, then over to 6.13, the board shall have the power to appoint such other employees. And we've cut out officers, so it's not confusing about who an officer is. But the board shall have the power to appoint employees as it deems necessary.
If I could just expand on that. It was discussed during the workshop that paragraph 609 provides that the board may appoint such other officers, agents, subordinate officers, and that it seemed duplicative and potentially conflicting under 61.3 to refer to other officers as staff, which are typically hired by the executive director. So the officers and was removed from 6.13 to avoid any inconsistencies with 6.09.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we did under fiscal year 8.01 determine that we're recommending the fiscal year be July to June?
And that is consistent with the JPA?
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's it, right? So any, anybody see other things that need to be addressed in the Roberts Rules of Order? Or are we ready to recommend approval of those as amended?
You mean the bylaws?
Bylaws, excuse me.
I think if you haven't done so already, we need to open up this up to public comment before we make a motion on this.
Okay. The public wish to comment on our bylaws?
You better follow.
Okay, let me turn it back to the board.
There are no other questions or concerns? I'm ready to move that we approve the bylaws as presented with the amendments included?
Let me just clarify, I think it's a resolution that we're approving, isn't it?
That is correct. The resolution was handed out before the meeting. It should be sitting at your place. That is the resolution that you would be approving?
Okay.
I'll second it.
So the motion and Roberts seconded it?
Excuse me, on the top right-hand corner is, is that the resolution number?
That is the number of attachments on the agenda. 4D, are you talking about the?
Do we have a number?
I normally assign the numbers after it's been approved, so this will be your 2019-001 MCAA.
Okay, 001.
What she said.
Good, okay. So we have a motion to approve the resolution, number 001. Second, we got a second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution passes. There we go. And finally, we have 4E, which is the Discussion and Consideration to Approve a Resolution Adopting the Madera County Arts Authority Conflict of Interest Code. We had that code at our last board meeting. We discussed it at the workshop. So if there are no questions, then I'd entertain a motion for approval of the Conflict of Interest Code.
Question for counsel?
Yes.
Since we're following our rules here, every item should be opened up to the public prior to approval?
Yes. The public should be allowed comment on every business item before it's put to discussion and vote of the board.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there, are there public comments about the Conflict of Interest Code from the public? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to the board.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
It's been approved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, resolution carries.
Madam Chair, before we move on, I would just like to remind the board members that now that we have a Conflict of Interest Code, you are required under the Fair Political Practices Act to file Form 700 for your initial appointment to the board and then annually thereafter.
Okay, and what's the process for us filing the Conflict of Interest Code?
So you can, you want?
I was just going to clarify, we're talking about economic disclosures as opposed to Conflict of Interest.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So with the Form 700s, if you'd like to contact my office, we do it digitally through NetFile. We just need to set you up with your account. I think most of you have one. So just the new members, we need an account to buy up.
Hmm? Easy, okay. So contact Rhonda's office, okay. And how soon would you like us to do that?
The deadline for your Form 700s is April 2nd of this year.
Okay.
Technically, it is more immediate. Your filing as an ongoing member of the board is April 2nd. However, technically, we were obligated to file upon appointment to the board to initiate a new seat. However, we didn't have our conflict code at that time, so we've been waiting. But now we have no more excuses. So you would file immediately on this?
Okay.
I believe right now I can go file.
Yeah. I'm surprised something doesn't pop up here.
I love clients who obey promptly.
Okay, let's see if we can do that.
Oh, we have a question.
Yes, this is Rochelle Novak.
Do the alternates also have to fill out Conflict of Interest?
Yes, they are obligated to fill out Form 700s as well.
Having said that, I've been notified that we do not have alternates in the Madera County Arts Council. Only the members have alternates officially. So the ones that we had as alternates for the Arts Council do not have to fill it out because we're not officially, don't officially have alternates. Okay. Okay, item 4F, Discussion and Consideration of a Meeting Schedule and Locations.
As far as, I'm not sure about a schedule, but as far as a location, does this work for everybody?
Oh, it'll do.
Well, how about your office?
Yeah, if you can find it, let me know.
If this location works, that's great. And since we are still using the services of Rhonda, I would ask you if you have some specific days and times that are not good for you? Or a recommendation for a good time?
I would just request that we meet on the fourth Monday of each month.
Okay.
We have board meetings, the first three Tuesdays of each month. And so if we could meet the fourth Monday, that would be great.
Okay. How does everybody, how does that work in everyone's schedule? Okay, so. And then do you want to, do you want to schedule a meeting for every month on the fourth Monday and cancel if we don't need it? Or is it better to schedule every other month and add one?
From a public standpoint, you're obligated to schedule by resolution your regular meeting schedule. And that sets up whether you have special meetings, what constitutes a special meeting, et cetera. So it is required that you set your meetings by resolution and then adjust them after the fact, not do it on the fly.
I understand. Okay. If we, maybe I understand. If we set our regular, by resolution, our regular meeting schedule is to meet every fourth Monday for the year. is to meet every 4th Monday for the year? Or our resolution is to meet January, March, and May, you know, every other month? Is that... Either one of those could be the set meeting days, right?
So long as you meet six times a year, yes.
Okay, and so in terms of the mechanics, is it better for us to have a resolution saying we're going to meet every month? And then if we don't need a meeting, cancel it? As opposed to having a special meeting because we...
From a due process notice standpoint, it is better for the public to know at one time all the meetings that you're planning for the year? So it would be better to set one for each month and then cancel them if necessary?
Okay. Does that work with everybody? Yeah?
We should have a calendar of those meetings and know with certainty that there are at least reasonable options for taking consideration holidays and so forth. I'm thinking November, last week in November, maybe Thanksgiving week, for example. So we can, by consensus, agree to every other month. But can we approve the calendar itself at the following meeting, or do we have to do it tonight?
Again, it's better from a public notice standpoint to set them. And then as you approach, if you need to adjust them, you can. You could take the time now to flip through the calendar and look at those Mondays and decide now that the 4th Monday of November, for instance, maybe that should be a Tuesday or a Wednesday.
Sure.
And adjust it now. We're looking at 12 dates, actually only 11 for the rest of this year, so...
Well, April, the 4th Monday in April, is the Easter Monday. And the 4th Monday in May is Memorial Day, so that's two months.
Well, okay, Memorial Day is a problem because it's a holiday. So we would want to eliminate Memorial Day, for sure.
So would you want to move it a day, two days, three days? Or would you want to take it off the calendar and go dark that month?
I think it might be a problem going dark that month.
For May?
Because in the end of June is when we need to have a budget developed. And we may need to have a meeting in May as we're preparing to finalize a budget.
You could go dark in May with regard to a regular meeting and then schedule a special meeting at any time during that month in order to address budgeting issues as you deem necessary?
Okay.
But according to what we approved earlier, we still need to have six scheduled meetings?
Yes, so you could go every other month if you wanted to. You could take April, May, and November off calendar, go dark those months, and still meet your six.
Okay.
And make up any slack if you wanted to through special meetings if circumstances warranted it.
So how does December look?
4th Monday is December 23rd.
That's not good.
So let's just back it one week on those, and we should be fine.
The problem with backing it up one week is we would conflict with the county Board's schedule and the availability.
They're on Tuesdays.
Right, but our clerk support is getting ready for a Tuesday meeting on the Mondays and has requested that we try to avoid the three Mondays of the month.
I understand that's a preference.
Okay.
December has five Mondays.
Let's go through...
We're only looking at a couple of times a year. I'm sure I can...
And we might even...
Get it as well.
Might even cancel those meetings, but just so we have them on the calendar.
Why don't we just do it month by month, and we'll end up with six because this is the first one? Then we don't have to deal with it in the abstract. Like, the 4th Monday in February would be February 25th. If nobody has a problem with February 25th, nothing else appears to be going on as far as holidays, why not at least temporarily, before we come up with a resolution or a motion, agree on February 25th and then move on to March? That might even take up less time.
Well, I think the intent, though, is that we get a resolution and approval of meeting dates at this meeting.
I agree.
So if we just...
So the next meeting, which would be in today's resolution, would be February 25th, if everybody agrees.
And then March 25th?
And then March 25th.
March 25th. The 4th Monday is April 22nd, which, day after Easter, and it might be a school holiday, but for the rest of us, I don't think it is. Then May 27th is Memorial Day. So it'd be a matter of picking some other day.
Okay.
We could do it right before the Board meeting on the 28th, which would guarantee that this meeting would be extremely short. And Rob would be on time for the Board of Supervisors.
There you go, yeah.
Okay, so June works, June 24th.
What about May?
I circled it to come back to.
Okay.
And then July would be, 1, 2, 3, 4, that'd be 22nd of July. And August is the, 1, 2, 3, 4, 26th. And September is the, 1, 2, 3, 4, 23rd. And October is the, 1, 2, 3, 4, it's not even Halloween, it's the 28th. And then we have a question in November and a question in December.
We only need six.
Yeah. So what do you want to do in May?
Or April? I didn't hear a day for April.
I think he said 22nd.
That's Easter Monday. Does anyone object to meeting on that day?
Or is it the Monday after?
Monday after Easter. Okay, okay, so May.
So you said we should meet that month because we have to have a budget ready to go, is that...
Yeah, one option is we skip that month. Another option is that we move it to a different day that month, like the 20th or something. Oh, no, that doesn't help you.
Thursday, the 30th, maybe, of May? Right before the, well, it's not before the holiday weekend.
Or we not have a meeting in May?
Maybe not have, because we've got some folks that may be involved in graduations and things of that sort in late May.
We have to approve a budget. I'd be partial to having May open and just saving that month for a workshop to discuss the budget and then come prepared in June to approve it.
Okay. Should we schedule, do we need to schedule a workshop too?
No, okay, no, just your regular meetings.
We just leave May open.
What we should do is note the April calendar, or at the April agenda, to discuss the May date for a workshop on budget.
Okay. Okay, and then we've got up until, what do we do about November and December? I say we don't have a meeting in December. The question is whether you want to have one in November.
Now, the November one, that would be the week of Thanksgiving, the Monday of?
Yeah, it's Thanksgiving week. Thanksgiving is the 28th.
Okay, so it'd be the 20...
Fifth.
Fifth, okay. I mean, I'm around.
So the county offices usually have the 26th and the 27th closed. And we're open the 23rd, 24th, and 25th.
So the 23rd's the Monday, or...
Whoops, I was looking at December, I'm sorry.
25th of November is on Monday. Did you say the county offices close Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
No, 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 we just closed Thursday, Friday. So we're open the 25th, if you wanted to go ahead and have a meeting on Monday, the 25th.
We can schedule it and cancel it if we want to as we get closer.
Right. Okay, so if that's the case, we're every Monday, every 4th Monday, except May and December. Is that right?
I'll just tell you in advance that I won't be here June 24th, but it may not be here there.
Yeah, then we can cancel it if we don't, if we don't need it. Okay. Now, we need a resolution?
Just a motion, and then it'll be memorialized.
Okay. Okay, so we've established that we would have meetings set for the 4th meeting, for the 4th Monday of each month, with the exception of May and December. Public comment about that? Hearing none? The Board?
I assume to approve the calendar, the exception of May and December.
Okay.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good, thank you, and we meet here. So let's see, now, item number five, member and staff reports.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Then we are going to move to our workshop. Do we adjourn the regular meetings?
No.
No, okay. And move to our workshop, where we are going to discuss and consider the mission and vision and long-term funding of the Arts Authority. Are we going to stay in this room to do that?
I didn't make arrangements for another room.
I think the meeting's noticed for here, so...
Yeah. We're going to stay right here, Eric? Yeah, for the workshop?
Okay.
What's your pleasure, folks? Would you like to...
Here's mine.
It's okay, okay. Then I would ask our members of the public to at least come up here. Lean on the counter, yeah. Yes, I did. I have a packet of information for Board members and the public.
You would typically give that to the clerk, and she would distribute it.
Oh, I could do that.
You're going back the same way, aren't you?
Okay. Last September, or in September, the Visioning Committee met and, among other things, developed a vision for the future for the Arts Center. Several of you people attended those sessions. And we set a vision, and we made recommendations to the Board at that time for what we determined, the Visioning Committee determined to be Board responsibilities and some suggestions for how the Board might move forward. And, let's see, representing the Visioning Committee, Rochelle and Tina and Eric, okay, were all on the Visioning Committee. And so thank you for coming today to add to our discussion. Do you need their names for the minutes or anything?
I know you gave the names, I have them, thank you.
Great. And so you've received these documents, some of these documents already, but I put them together for you so we didn't have to go digging through other reports and things that we found. So the first one that you have in your packet is the Madera County Arts Authority Board Responsibilities. This was generated from our vision-setting session. And we determined it was a beginning list, a beginning summary of major tasks that needed to be addressed over the coming months as we get started in our process towards building the Center for the Arts. So I'd like everybody to look down that list to familiarize yourself with it. And I thought, just to kind of bring it to mind, if as you're reading, you would mark what you think are our top three to four things to do? The top three on the list that you think we need to get started on right away as you go down the list? Then we can talk about that and see if we're agreeing on priorities. Just the first one. Anybody have any questions or clarification requests about any of those? Okay.
I do.
Yes?
Number seven? Establish ownership of the various buildings or facilities. Who's that referencing?
Somebody's got to own the library. Somebody's got to own the Performing Arts Center and that new building. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's just do a little quick runaround. If you could just raise your hand, and we'll do a little tally of... How many thought number one was something we need to get after right away? You guys, raise your hands, too. One, you can't hear? I said I'm going to just do a quick, raise your hand if you think each one of these is in your top three, okay, or four. And so how many people put number one as one of the things they think is a top one to get after? Okay, that's two. Number two is to develop committees in the key results areas. How many thought that one was important to get after right away? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, okay, ding ding. Number three is develop, determine each agency's commitments and contributions to the project.
How does that differ from number four? I ran them together.
Oh, we could put those together if you wish, because they fit. It's, we need to develop an operating budget, and part of that is determining what the commitments are from, the contributions from each of the committees. So if you put number three or four in your top pile... Oh, that's everybody but maybe Rob. Rob, okay.
I had three, yeah.
He just joined.
Okay.
No, I already...
He already raised his hand. Number five is hiring a campaign consultant. Number six is hiring the staff person.
I put that in with number two. If you can have all these committees, somebody's got to run it.
Yeah, so one, two, three, four.
You said top three, right?
Yeah. Or four.
Or four, or five. She also said or four.
And the hiring, oh, that was the staff person. That was, that was the staff person, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Establishing ownership. Oh, okay. Establishing a mechanism for managing funds from the capital campaign like a foundation. Okay. Informing ourselves about the projects that are going on and becoming a liaison to the community. Oh, good, okay, we seem to have agreement that we should get after getting the committees developed, the commitments from each of the agencies to get the operating budget and hiring a staff person. Okay, so from there, I wanted to show you one other list that the Visioning Committee had made, and that's on the next page, so hold those in your head. So in terms of committees, the Visioning Group determined things, the key result areas fell into three basic areas, and that is administration and management, finance, and programming. And under programming, there's programming for the new center, but there's also creating a community engagement plan. And that fits in in several different ways when we start raising funds, but also making the community aware of what it is that we're trying to do. So, this list just takes those board responsibilities and puts them over here under committees. So the first thing I'd like to have us all talk about is the committee structure. Do you think we ought to do it? Are these the committees we ought to have? Who is interested in being the board representative for those committees if we want to have them? So, do we have input anymore, the comments from the people who are on the committee about having committees and why that came up?
I've had a suggestion, I think it might be helpful if you have your staff support person that can sit with whoever on all of the committees for continuity.
Yes.
Are you saying that generally speaking, or do you have somebody in mind?
I don't have a group of mine.
Okay.
I envision that the staff person is going to be helping to set up those meetings, making sure there's minutes of those meetings, making sure that reports get back to the board, making sure all of that organizational stuff happens. So what's your, what do you, do you have any thoughts about? Are these the kind of committees we want to have? Is there another one that's more important than this?
So admin, management, finance, and program, these are three committees you're referencing?
Yeah.
Personally, I'm only focused on the, on the finance committee because we need funding identified. I think we, the last workshop that we had, the Madera County Arts Council? There were several people in attendance there that were volunteering to be on, on the different committees. Do you have that roster or check-in of those that were volunteering for the different committees?
No, but we could get that, yes. There, there's been a committee, a strategic planning committee that has met several times and has been helping provide background information, worked on the visioning process. And at their last meeting, they discussed whether that committee should be disbanded and those people then move out to these committees to provide continued support in these areas as, as they are interested. So, you could have some available people to, to join these committees right away, and then you may have other people that you want to bring forward as well. So, we could have lots of opportunity for involvement here.
I like the three areas, I think they cover the important parts of, of the whole project. For instance, if you're hiring a capital campaign manager and overseeing fundraising and so forth, I don't know if a lot of people that are going to give a lot of money to this particular project, if they don't understand what we have set up under, under administration and management, you know, what is the, what is it going to look like, you know? Having a strategic plan, determining ownership, you know, they definitely go hand in hand. And then, the sustainability, which is the programming, you know, what's the, you know, it's great, hey, we've got this arts center, now what do we do? So, you know, to me, they're all three important fact, the main three important factors, so I think you hit it.
Yeah, I, I agree that they're important, it was just, my comments earlier were just about how much more important finance was initially to get started is, is the way I see it. Obviously, there's a lot of components that need to be addressed and multiple, multiple entities or persons can participate in these various committees to, to provide that.
To me, all three committees can be moving forward at the same time. If we try to do this without dividing up the work, then we run into the problem of what do we do first and second, and we don't have time to do everything and pretty soon it all crashes. So, I think the concept is that we'd have these committees who would all be doing work and then hopefully that would all, we would be weaving that back together when they come with their reports.
I'm not objecting to anything, and so if, if you're asking for support for these three committees to be initiated, then I'm, I'm in support of that.
Yeah. Whatever happens today, we'll come back to our next board meeting for approval. So they'll be made into discussion and consideration for approval areas at our next board meeting, so. Do you see?
Did you bring up that whatever committees you have need to be chaired by a member of the board? So, they need to, they need to up those committees. If the committees you want to do, then we need someone from the board to say they're going to chair that committee. That doesn't mean they have to do all the work.
Sure. And I agree that that should be a, a requirement. Can you hear me okay? Can you get closer? No, I'm just kidding. I agree with you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would direct the, the board's attention to Section 3.03 of the JPA regarding committees. It says, "The board shall determine the need and may establish one or more from time to time. Each such committee shall be comprised of representatives of the board." The interesting thing about that would be that only board members may be committee members. You can have folks come, the public advise, but they would not be allowed voting under this agreement. Only the board members would comprise the committee. In addition, these are Brown Act committees, because they would be permanent and ongoing committees under the board. Unfortunately, given that they're Brown Act committees, only two members of the board may meet in another meeting without violating the Brown Act and negating this board's ability to take up that work. My firm didn't draft the JPA, so I'm, I'm exploring these things at the same time you are.
So, a committee can, a committee can be formed with one or two directors or board members participating, and the committee doesn't have to take action.
Right.
Just come to consensus, give direction, and then the, the board member or, I understand what you were alluding to earlier about sharing, it's just about leading the meeting is what we're referring to, and that board member or, or two board members can come back to the board of directors and, and provide information.
I, I think generally your statement is correct. The committee has authority to act in whatever manner this board determines. So, I raise it for you to think about those kinds of limitations. Now, when you say consensus, consensus is typically consensus of the members of the committee.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
It can be informed based on members of the public or people who regularly attend, but if you have two board members that are members of the subcommittee, then the consensus would be between two, those two members as to what to bring back to the board.
Yeah.
And, and all that does come back is a recommendation to this board to take action.
Yeah, I mean, for most part committees are providing information and even recommendations through their findings as a result of effort they put forth, that's why those committees are formed.
That is correct.
All of this is problematic for me, from the mechanical perspective. We've got a joint powers agreement that upfront lists what we're supposed to do through the JPA, what the purpose is, and there are nine, 10, 12 of those, whatever they are. And then we just went through a document that says responsibilities of the MCAA are as follows, and, and we've picked three general categories that we generally agree on as to what we're going to be doing. Now we're talking about forming committees that talk about some of the priorities that we've agreed on, plus some of the things that we haven't agreed on that do need to be done. And then we have the legal hurdle of, well, what a committee can and can't do and how it should meet, which is good, but we haven't dealt with Eric's, I think, great suggestion, which is that the staff person or executive director who needs to be hired should be involved in all of this. And yet, we seem to be talking about having these committees meet without this staff person actually being hired. In order to hire the person, we need to go back to the public men, members and ask for money, but in order to give money, as Rob suggested in December, we have to have a plan to suggest to the council and boards why they should donate and how much, because this is what we plan to do. So, I, I'm not sure why we're talking about these committees at this point, other than, and in general, but it seems to me that we need to come up with a, a way of answering the general members' questions that have not been asked. What are you going to be doing? How much money do you want? What are you going to do with the money? And who's going to be shepherding that other than the MCAA? In other words, the executive director, staff person, whatever that person's title is. I mean, I, I just have the impression that we're kind of sort of putting the cart before, before the horse, and maybe it's just that I don't understand, and I'm willing to listen, but I'm not sure where this is going to get, forming these committees with these broad mandates, if you will, without the executive director or staff person participating.
It could be some time before, I don't think anybody is thinking that we're going to have a staff person relatively soon. Are we in agreement in that, or is somebody thinking that we're going to have something in the next quarter?
One option would be to establish an ad hoc committee for a very limited purpose, for a very limited time, to work on a proposed budget that this board would approve for the sole purpose of initially, initially getting the organization off the ground, hiring the staff person, and once this board approves it, take it back to the general members to see if they're willing to commit funds. Once the organization gets its funds, you can hire your staff person, and then I would agree with Mr. Whelan that that would be the time to establish the general subcommittees, the ongoing Brown Act subcommittees.
And my understanding was that when we go back to our respective entities, that we're going to want to present some sort of, of plan on how funds would be used and incorporating that would be the salary of the staff person.
That is one option. Another option would be to initially go back to just fund for an initial period of time, the staff person and what would be necessary to get that planning process off.
So, um, there's no particular order or reason why we're discussing committees first. All I'm doing is bringing documents back to you that were talked about at the Visioning Committee, and one of those areas is the, the key areas and possible committee structure, okay? If you want to go on in the packet, the other thing we were asked to bring forward was some information about a beginning budget, so that's here too. And also costs possibly of staffing and some general discussion of the kind of staffing that you want. If the board wants to then bring an, an ad hoc committee to work out the details of that, that's fine, but I want to, I was trying to bring the board together on the kind of areas that we need to come to agreement on and move forward on, and, and with some information in each of those areas. I didn't, I wasn't intending to have an order, like first we have committees and then we have a staff person. I also agree we need to get a staff person and a budget, so. So would you like to look at some of the other documents that are here?
Sure.
If you want to go to the next page, it says projected budget needs. We are also required to have a budget, an annual budget, as you know now, by June 30th, 2019. And the JPA spells out very clearly that under 4.04, that the authority shall not impose assessments or other charges on members, and that 9.4.05, all fees, costs, and expenses incurred by the authority shall be funded from voluntary contributions from third parties, contributions from general members, or grants or other funds. So there's a variety of ways that we can bring money in, but the intent here is that the, I think the general members are going to be hopefully contributing some to get a budget started. I would like us to think about the general areas that we're going to have to consider in that budget. Maybe we only need to begin with a starting budget to get ourselves started, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but we are going to have to consider the cost of an auditor, liability insurance, our bookkeeper, controller, attorney, secretary, director, whatever staff position we want to have, campaign consulting, office supplies, and then of course, down the road, we have project costs for demolition and building and retrofitting and all of that. And there may be some other areas that you all think are going to need to be included in, in that budget, but to me, it speaks to the need to, we need to have some money to get ourselves started. Yeah, secretary, director, staff person, yeah. So, and that takes me to the next page. What I did was, we took the, the wording from the documents we have, the JPA and the bylaws, they set out the duties of the secretary, and our organization has to have a secretary, and so that's on the left. And then it also says on the right that the board may employ by contract or otherwise an executive director who will serve as the executive director of the authority. And these are two things we, I think we need to have. It also says the executive director can be, also serve as the secretary of the board. So, when I started down the path of research, I was thinking about having the secretarial kind of position as a board clerk kind of thing, which fits with what's on the left, but the board needs to consider if we want to have a director that also serves as a secretary, or what kind of staff person we really want to have here. So, I'd like us to discuss what you all think is going to be necessary in, just in general, and how we proceed with getting a position ready to go. and how we proceed with getting a position ready to go for our leadership of our organization. Yeah, Michelle?
I just have a question on the projected budget. It's assistant clerk county board supervisor. Is this kind of hours a month? Is that what you're thinking?
No, it's not. I'll come to that when we get to that budget page. No, right now it's just talking about, what is it we need here? What kind of staff person are we going to need, and what kinds of things is that person going to be having to do? And I think Eric mentioned some of those already.
We're talking about the, this is not the executive director, or it is? Just the secretary? Is that what you said?
Secretary slash secretary, is that what you're looking at?
The, this, this page here is what we have to work with in terms of the JPA and the bylaws about positions we need. We have to have an officer called the secretary. These are the duties of the secretary. By the way, some of those are on this back page. Those are the duties of the secretary. If you look at the other side of the page, it says the board may choose an executive director. And the executive director, if you look at the bottom of the second page, may serve as the secretary of the board. So are we thinking one person to do two parts? Are we thinking two people? You know, what are we thinking here in terms of the needs of a staff person?
Executive director, and as needed, or upon the need, adding a secretary. But we need an executive director, somebody who can provide guidance, direction, and keep everybody in line.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Focus.
Duties of the secretary, is this secretary, the secretary, you have a president, vice president, secretary of treasurer, is that kind of secretary?
Yes.
You're saying it doesn't have to be one of you to be secretary?
Exactly. We can appoint someone who's not on the board to be the secretary, and someone else who's not on the board to be treasurer. Right now, the duties of the secretary are being handled by the county supervisor's clerk, out of the generosity of the Madera County.
She votes for secretary.
But we can't sustain that.
I was going to suggest, Julie, if that's working on, I don't want to volunteer Rhonda for anything, but.
But he will.
Maybe, well, if we looked at that on just an hourly basis for right now, until your board figures out kind of where you want to go with this, maybe Rhonda, the works with her schedule, continue to do what she's doing, but maybe we keep track of the hours.
It's a compensation.
Rather than hiring someone separately, yeah, just find a way to reimburse. And it's not going to be a lot of hours, but she'll just need to have big timelines or else, keep track of your hours.
I like that idea. I think we need to focus on an executive director. And that executive director may be somebody who's part-time for a few months, and then as need be, become full-time, when, I don't know. But if we're getting something relatively free, at least initially, I think we should take advantage of that. But with the understanding that once the general members decide how much they're going to kick in, that they have financial reckoning will come to reimburse the county in some form or fashion.
Julia, just, Madam Chair, just a couple words I'd just like to mention. You know, I'm thinking about, okay, myself as a board member on the board of supervisors, what is it that I would like to see brought before me to make a decision in terms of, okay, here's some starter funding, you know, and I feel comfortable contributing these monies because of the plan that's been presented in front of me? And what I'd like to see presented would be, number one, what is the overall objective? You know, what's the overall objective of this arts center? You know, what's it going to do? What's it going to bring to Madera? What's, I think in our minds, we know what that is, maybe. But I think in the minds of, you know, my colleagues and most Maderans, you know, people really don't have an idea of what that might be. So that'd be number one. Second of all, is this, is the center going to be staged in terms of development? Like, are we looking at doing something, number one, with the old library? Number two, with the park? Number three, with the, you know, the big art center? What is that going to look like? What is the, you know, how is this thing going to be staged? Number three, I'd like to see the approximate cost of each stage. You know, they might say, okay, it's going to cost, you know, $5 million for the old library, and it's going to cost this much here and this much here. What's that going to be? Number four, where are the sources of funds? Where are they going to come from to put into this particular project? And I'd like to see that be somewhat specific, you know, rather than saying, oh, we're going to get grants, or we're going to get these people are kicking in over here, and we've got people, people willing to donate. Well, maybe we can make that a little bit more specific, you know, rather than kind of pie in the sky type of thing. And the next thing is, number five, after looking at this, is the project feasible? You know, are these funds attainable? And that's the reason I go back to the stages, the tiered look, because I think that they are in tiers. You know, we look at, you know, goal A, goal B, and goal C for this particular project. And then the last thing is, once we get it built, how are we going to sustain it? What's the programming going to be? Are we looking at, you know, again, oh, build it and they'll come? Well, I think we need a little bit more than that. You know, is it going to be concerts? Are they going to be, you know, live performances? Is the school district going to utilize this for a lot of activities? What's that going to be? And I think with something like that, I think that I, as a board member, and probably city council, and certainly MUSD, I think we feel maybe a little bit more comfortable in terms of, you know, making a commitment for that, that beginning funding.
Chair, Chair Opie. I'm not sure if you did for Madera Fide or for the county, but she came to the city council and gave a presentation that basically marked down everything. And gave us these beautiful books that laid it all out, the phases and everything. Did everyone receive that?
You know, yeah, you're talking about the DOMA, DAMA?
Yes.
I think it's, it's this.
Yes, that's it.
Da-da-da, you know, yeah. And now, I'm not sure if there was, there's a lot of pictures here, but I don't see a whole lot of detail in terms of.
There's not.
Yeah, the programming.
There's not a timeline.
But there are committees that I had sat on that really narrowed it down and even talked about funding and where to get that. I don't know if there's minutes for that, where we even did charts and broke it down into groups. I was part of some of those committees.
Well.
That was formulated together and kind of put into like a grafting of.
Good.
Rob, I think, I'm in agreement with everything you said and sort of, and the layers and the steps of moving that way. But I think we have begun that process already. And part of what we've done, the planning committee, when it was asked to do some research about things, to create a vision, and then to begin to research things, came up with these certain areas that needed to be addressed in order to achieve what you're asking be achieved. And right now, it seems to me that the admin management part of it needs to be organized in such a way that then the rest can proceed. I mean, if we cannot have committees just offhand, giving you advice and telling you what to do, then there needs to be a structure within which we can do that. And the only way you can do that is if this board decides how they want to proceed. If this is the way you want to proceed, then you say so, then we move forward, then we address each one of these different places, you know, issues that you've brought up. Some of the answers, I think, are already there. And you, you look back and you say, okay, we suggested admin management, finance, and programming. Several of the things that you mentioned are being addressed within these areas here. But you have to have some sort of structure within which to research, because you're not going to all sit and research all of this. So you need to have information to use and make a decision. So, you know, yes, establish a budget seems to me the first thing that you need to do. You need to know if you're going to have any money to be able to do this or not. Just, just this board function, not the project, the board, and then move forward.
So I had the same questions. This has been going on for several months now. I feel the same way. We have to have something to bring back to our respective entities when you're ready to, when you want to ask what the commitment is, especially when it's monetary. You can't just say, I need money for what? Not quite sure yet how much I need, but it can't work like that, right? But we're still like in the exploratory phase, even though we're formed here as a body, to find out more information. We do need to obtain more data, more information, more survey, for example, to see what the impact can be and realized by our community, and what the various entities could, how they could benefit from a project like this. I think with getting all that information at some point is going to be necessary before anybody puts forth a significant commitment, because it's still wide open. There's not a whole lot of definitive answers to questions that people are asking, or our respective bodies are asking. So I can appreciate what, what you're going toward. But like I said, my understanding is that we were formed here so we can start to provide some direction. We had initial commitments from the county, obviously, and the city. The district is more reluctant, right, because of the conflict of use of the funds. But nonetheless, there was an agreement to move forward in this respect, in an attempt to acquire that information so that more definitive responses can be given to the board and the project before going forward.
Okay, so I guess we're looking at seed, I'm sorry. I guess we're looking at, this is kind of like the seed money type, type part of the approach. We're looking at stage one, seed money, to do our feasibility study to get to this stage to where we can go to the next thing. I guess I'm just thinking, it would still be good to have something that was maybe brief, maybe, you know, more general, but, you know, talked about some of these things again before they're brought back to the boards, even for the seed money.
Sure, right. Because, you know, you have new board members now. Now, I don't know about the board of supervisors, but the city council, school board has new members.
And Rob's last comment was where I was going to go. We already have some of the answers. They're already in writing. Perhaps it would be best to take that necessary information and reduce it to a more concise presentation. Some of the answers, we're not going to be able to provide when asking for startup money. If we had all of the answers, then why are we here? You know, we need startup money to explore the possibilities, and everybody needs to have a little faith. You don't start massive public projects like this with all the answers. And I look at this as the start of, can we do this? As opposed to a fait accompli. We could go back to the architect's estimates of cost, but I'd hate to present that and scare people off, because we don't really know what the costs are going to be a few years down the road. But we do, we should be able to come up with the grand scheme in a concise presentation with some reliability while asking for seed money in order to test the waters of the feasibility of this. We know that the Arts Council has about $3 million unless last year's stock market affected that grossly negatively. But we know there's some money there, and I think that needs to be emphasized. It's not like we're expecting the three general members to pony up all the money. But I think the focus should be on seed money. We need to test the waters, we need some money just to go forward. And then, if each of the two boards and the council want us to come back at a specific point in time with more specific answers, we should be inviting that, we should be graciously accepting that invitation too.
And that initial presentation and the ask for seed money should include the cost, the expected cost that we come up with for, for staff.
Sure.
That should be included in there. This way, we have a firm number that others can see and decide upon.
And who would you like to create this group?
I would be happy to be part of the committee. Who would like to join me?
Oh, I will.
Okay.
Is that the maximum we can have, council, too?
Yes.
Chair Opie, I know we've had several community members come out to a lot of these committees that we've put together to get, to draw a lot of this data and information. Is it possible to go through the list and pinpoint those that have financial backgrounds and form that with our two board members, with, and Tina, to kind of draw something that we can take back to our boards?
In terms of the overall plan?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. You add a couple people to Rob and to Chuck, okay.
That were there, that sat there and talked about a lot of the questions that Rob had on his list, about the objective, about how we were going to front the money, where's the funding going to come from, and two, three, and four, again, on his list.
Okay.
So did this committee can only be composed of board members?
No, no, no. She's suggesting that the committee have Rob and Chuck as the board members, but then some of our committee people, a couple of our committee people would sit in on it too.
To be clear, according to the JPA, the board members are the only ones who can vote. You can invite as many people as you want to sit with and advise the committee, but only the two board members can vote.
And that's why I mentioned to go down the list and pick out the ones that have that financial background, or administration background that we would need, to kind of create the document that we would need to take back to our boards.
Will this committee decide how many hours you're going to need an executive director and the amount of money they're spending on one and all of that?
Could give the information to the board, and the board is the one that has to vote on it, bring it back.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
And then we make the final decision. But they would probably take as much information to give them, if you have the knowledge and the background of that.
I see. So I see two things from the committee. One is the, at least the broad picture of what it is we're trying to do and what we know about costs and things. So where we are in the project. And the other is more details about the startup funds that we would need to get, seed money to get started. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. And that would be with Rob and Chuck and their committee folks. How would you like to?
Let's get a meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
We would, we would need a motion to establish a committee. And in that motion, you would need to say whether it's a general standing committee, a permanent committee, or whether it's an ad hoc committee designed for a singular purpose for a particular period of time. And when I say particular period of time, I don't mean June 30th. I mean, until something is achieved, and then the committee would go away if it were ad hoc. You can create it as an ad hoc committee now, and then make it become a permanent committee at the future. But if, as I mentioned earlier, if your, if your sole desire for the function of this committee is to give you the information you need to go back and get seed money, and then, once you get the seed money, come back and create permanent committees, that just needs to be clear from the motion. Or if you want to go ahead and create a standing committee, you'll need to decide, you know, pretty much what its function is.
If it's a long-term committee, then we failed miserably. So it should be a very short-term ad hoc effort.
Right. Question for council. Will, will the Brown Act permit us to form? Will the Brown Act permit us to form a committee without it being agendized?
Good point. No, not today. It would need to be agendized for the next meeting to take action. This is just a workshop.
But we could have a special meeting to create the committee.
Yes, you could, on 24 hours' notice.
Just don't want to hold you up, but I want to do it the right way as well.
There you go. You're wonderful.
Do you have recommendations for who you want on the ad hoc committee?
Not really, not personally, but if you've got a list, that would be helpful.
Could I turn, could I ask you two to get the list out and determine who you want to ask to be on that ad hoc committee with you?
Just so unclear.
I would say as few as possible, as far as I'm concerned.
The only two people who can be on the committee are the board members. Anyone else can attend, because it will be a Brown Act committee.
Okay.
I would say a handful of interested citizens. A handful.
Yeah, five. You know how much, every person adds an extra 15 to 30 minutes on being in the meeting?
So, we are, we're going to have a motion at the next meeting to have an ad hoc committee of Chuck Wieland and Rob Poitras. Right?
Yes.
In order to provide the information that is going to be needed by the members to go back to their respective boards to ask for seed money.
Yep, yes.
Okay, have we got all that down?
And if this is only dealing with the seed money?
Correct.
Not the rest of the things?
No, that will flower at a later time.
Yeah. No, this would be the seed money so we can get to those things, yeah.
And then the board would, is the board interested in considering a special meeting in order to form that committee or waiting until February 25th?
No.
I second that emotion.
I know. We want to wait a whole another, another month to, before we have a regular board meeting to approve our little subcommittee? You don't think we could have a little special meeting so that we could get going?
You know, I come from a different world, and meetings are never special for me.
It only requires a quorum of the board, three members who are willing to convene a meeting in order to pass what you have discussed here.
It's only like two minutes.
Yeah, yeah, famous last words.
It is, it's only two minutes.
And I won't be here, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's my point. The guy who's not proposed to be on the committee is suggesting that we have a special meeting.
Could we just?
I'm okay with it if you want a special meeting.
We could do it on the 25th and have, go through the list and have the names ready to go. And then we should approve it on the 25th for our ad hoc. And they're ready to go with their team.
I don't think you have to approve the other people.
Right.
But it would give you time to contact them.
But they won't see you.
But I would think if it's not too much trouble to agendize a meeting, we could find three of us that could come together for five minutes.
I hear our chairwoman, and I hear her, and I understand her, so let's get a special meeting going.
Yeah. It'll only take five minutes, but then you can get on with the work. So, we have something to come back next month.
See, it's already grown longer. You know, Rick said it was two minutes, Julie says it's five minutes.
Well, she's never.
So, yeah, pick a date.
Yeah, what's a date we could?
I'm around.
Tomorrow night at 5:45?
No. Well, not for me.
It's my wife's birthday tomorrow, can't do it.
I'm going to a concert tomorrow night, sorry. But it won't be in Madera, because we don't have a place to.
Wednesday, council.
Well, it can be at any time during the day.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have RAN here.
We have a, there's a management meeting in the chambers at 10, and there's a RAN meeting in the chambers at 3:30.
So, we should be done by 4:30? The RAN meeting shouldn't go too long, should it?
The RAN shouldn't go too long.
Yeah, so you want to do it at 4:30?
What if we met here at, like, real quick in the morning on Wednesday, like at 9:00 or something?
We've got somebody who isn't educated.
I'm not available on Wednesday morning. We have our agenda review meetings on Wednesday mornings.
I don't think we need you, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a special meeting that you suggested.
No, because Rick's bringing somebody from the school district, right?
Yeah.
How about the afternoon of the 30th? When's the afternoon? 4:30?
Yeah, 4:30. Let's do it.
And it will take six minutes? Okay. And everybody may be able to come, but we need to have three. So, that specific purpose is taken care of. Okay. And then you folks can figure out when you want to get your group together and you know what your job is. Okay, very good. And one of the questions that you're going to address will be, what are we looking for in terms of a staff person?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. The other, there's only one other piece of paper you have? Right? Okay. And that's what Rochelle was asking you about. When we started down the process, this path of having a recommended beginning preliminary seed money budget, we were asked to come, to start to find out what an employee would cost and what a couple of the considerations would be for money that we would need initially for the members to ask for, okay? And so, this was put together by the strategic planning folks to kind of begin to address kind of what we're talking about. It's not a million dollars. So, and Rochelle specifically asked about 100 hours a month and if that's what they were actually putting in. So, let me just explain to you, since you have the document, what 100 hours a month meant. This was based on the salary of an assistant county clerk, a clerk of the County Board of Supervisors. And we were thinking originally that it would be half-time, because I don't think we need somebody full-time. And, but I asked them to bump it up to 100 hours a month, because people get raises, and that might not be the exact figure when you actually determine a salary. So, that's why it's 100. We were thinking more 80 hours a month. The county person put in the costs of benefits if you were a county employee. We added in some money for supervision, HR, and accounting that are like indirect costs if this person belongs to one of the agencies or one of the member agencies. What there would be an indirect cost, a little office space and travel, for an indirect cost of $5,400. And then the other big need that our committee saw for seed money was for some startup for campaign prep. When Rob talks about the need to have information available in print that says this is where we're trying to get to, that's called branding. And so, we put some money in to begin the process of hiring somebody to help us with branding. And then our beginning capital campaign consultant, because before you ever go out and ask for money, you have to have exactly what Rob is talking about here. And so, we begin to get some of those materials produced. So, our estimate based on that was going to be about $100,000 for startup. And then anticipate, of course, that salaries can go up because people get raises. So, that's what that paper is for. It wasn't based on if we hired a staff person or executive director, though it was based on if we, if we went with a clerk-type position. So, that's something the board might want to consider.
With respect to the position now, as I look at this, what type of employee do we expect them to be? And a W-2 employee, an independent contractor? What is available, what are our options for that?
Let me ask somebody like Eric, who works with that.
There's labor law now, I think, that says you, you know, that having an independent contractor is a lot more difficult than it used to be.
Yeah, because you really don't have an independent contractor. You really have a staff person. Eric, you want to comment on?
Well, I mean, one of the ideas, I mean, until your board figures out exactly what you need in the board, maybe one of the three entities, if they've got like an analyst or something that wants a special assignment, they have authority to contract the hours and reimburse the entity. You know, if you've got a superstar, someone that might enjoy doing this, if they have a best, you know, they have an interest in it, maybe just start with somebody like that, a super clerk or something that would want to provide the staff support until you figure out exactly what you need in a director or whatever you're going to have a staff person. If you've got that, everything built in, just matter the person, the entity will first.
And the actual cost? Thank you.
We've also, we used a model once in the school district where three school districts went together and hired a person to do a project. And the district, where the employee came from, became housed in that district. And then the other districts reimbursed, sent their two-thirds of the money to the receiving district. So, there's ways to, there's ways to do that. There's also in-kind ability. When you see some of the lists of things that are in the budget, you know, we've had the wonderful in-kind help from the county for legal services and for county clerk services. And so, yeah, I know. It's just going to be hard to replace. You're replaceable, I'd say. So, anyway, so there are some in-kind kind of costs. But we're not talking, I think people originally were pretty concerned that we were asking for a million dollars for startup funds, you know, like to renovate a building to get started. I don't think we're looking at that. I think it's for us to get our sea legs and get the process moving. And I think a staff person's going to be absolutely necessary at some level to get us, get us organized. Okay. Are there other things that, about this whole process we want to discuss today?
We'll see everybody Wednesday, huh?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so.
Okay, anything from the, our visitors today? Thank you for coming. Okay, then our workshop is adjourned. Our meeting was adjourned? Okay, and we'll see you Wednesday for a minute. Oh.